Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Present.
Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Mayor Kirkoff.
Present. We do have a quorum. Everybody, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have no presentations or awards or personal appearances, so we'll move right into staff reports. Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I would ask Ms. Warner to make a report for the City Clerk's office.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to remind you of the Cass County League of Cities meeting to be held this Wednesday, July the fifteenth, at the Cass County Courthouse. If you do plan to attend, we do need that reservation as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a report for Community Development.
Thank you. Going over the schedule for the upcoming meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission, they will be meeting next Tuesday, July twenty-first. They have three items on their agenda. They will be considering the site plan for a proposed Taco Bell restaurant to locate it in front of the Price Chopper on Lot Two, which is the lot right at the corner, right at the intersection of Johnston Parkway and Fifteen Highway. They'll also consider a final plat for Westbrook and Creekmore, their eleventh final plat. Coincident with that application is a request to modify the Memorandum of Understanding for Creekmore. What they're specifically asking to do is modify the development standards that would apply to new homes that would be constructed in that eleventh phase. You could think of it as, in essence, they are looking at a modified rezoning of the property. The zoning stays the same, but they are looking to modify the standards, which would be lot size and setbacks for the homes. These lots would be slightly smaller than the other lots that you would see in the Westbrook subdivision. So that does require amending the MOU for that development. So that actually will be a public hearing at the Planning Commission level, and that would come forward to a public hearing in front of the City Council. So that final plat is dependent upon that MOU being amended. If the MOU does not get amended, they have to modify the final plat to meet the current standards for all the lots of the Westbrook portion of Creekmore. And then on August fourth, the Commission will hold a public hearing to consider the Twenty-Second Amendment to the UDC. This amendment would include items the Commission discussed as part of their annual review of the UDC they held a couple of months ago. So there are some minor modifications they're requesting to the UDC as part of their annual review, and they'll have a public hearing on August fourth for that. So those are the items we currently have scheduled.
Questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, I'll ask you this. As far as for notifications on the modification of the zoning, rezoning modification, and I realize that's probably not what it is and it's not what you said, but we're on the same page there. What kind of notifications going out to the neighboring properties, the adjoining properties and such? Can you explain that to me a little bit?
Yes, I can. In this particular area, there's really no immediate neighbors to this location. It is kind of isolated right there at one hundred and sixty-third at Boxer. So no immediate neighbors, if you would, are notified. It's not part of the process to amend the MOU. We have posted their request on the city's website, as we do with other items that are in front of the Planning Commission. We've posted legal notices. Those are the only official notifications that have gone out to the public.
What I was kind of curious about is if we're posting any of our signs that, like what we do when we have rezoning or vacations of easements in properties, private properties, the signs that go up, you know, are we posting any of those? And if not, why not, I guess?
I haven't to date. It's not required by the code where we amend the MOU, but we certainly can. It does draw attention, and it does get individuals to call in. And so certainly nothing against doing that, you know.
And that's exactly my point right there. I'm not expecting, you know, to change policy, but I see a place here where there's a place for improvement. You'll hear me talk about continual improvement because of my workplace. Anytime that we can engage the public and let them know what's going on, this is my feeling, my opinion, that if we have that opportunity and it doesn't cost us anything, I would suggest, or I would support, putting those out. That way, it does draw the attention. And it eliminates the, in my feeling, it eliminates another avenue for somebody saying, well, I did not know.
Yeah, we can take care of that in the boarding.
Mr. Catterett, I had a question. Could you kind of give your impression of where the building permits will end, or land at the end of the year, I'm sorry? I see in the chart, it looks like we're down. I mean, you can kind of follow the economic trend from the packet, obviously, with the recession of oh-eight, oh-nine, and then the upswing since then. And it really goes up into two thousand fourteen. The bar on the graph that you provided is way down, but then if you look across at the homes currently under construction, those numbers are double. I mean, it looks really good. I'm just wondering if we're in a spot where they haven't finished yet and that graph would change at that point, or kind of what we might expect.
We'll probably come in close to what we were at in two thousand thirteen calendar year. The two thousand fourteen numbers peaked because of the Ridgeway Villas project. We had fifty-six permits in that particular development. They're townhomes, but they're included in the overall total. So it did spike the two thousand fourteen numbers. But what we're seeing as far as overall for two thousand fifteen would be very comparable to two thousand thirteen, so likely around the one hundred number.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Catterett a question. I see where we got recognition for a gold level of solar-ready community status. Can you tell us a little bit more about it? We seem to be the only one so far that has it.
We did receive the certification through MARC in a program they had, working with communities in the Kansas City area regarding solar energy and following best management practices for solar energy. We received the gold status along with Gladstone. And there were a couple of communities that did receive the silver, such as Belton, received silver recognition. And what it simply means is that Raymore has taken steps in providing information and resources available to the public regarding the installation of solar energy, whether it's from residential structures or commercial structures. So we have best management practices in place that, again, are to assist individuals to install solar energy. So MARC was recognizing the community for what we have done.
Thank you, Mr. Catterett. I would ask that Mr. Willarth please make a report on his most recent legal conference.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn. Over the weekend, I had the pleasure of being your representative to the Missouri Municipal League Summer Seminar of Attorneys. There was excellent discussion of many topics, as always, and I would disperse to Mr. Fairborn and Mr. Catterett for dispersment to the Planning Commission and you all as appropriate, the annual update of Supreme Court and Missouri land use cases. One case in particular, Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, which struck down a temporary church sign and what was held to be unconstitutional is probably going to require Mr. Catterett and I to look at the sign regulations to see if we need to make some modifications to come in line with that decision. Most cities need to. And then an excellent little handout called Selected Best Practices for Municipal Lawyers has lots of interesting things on sunshine law and financial policy and ordinances versus resolutions and lots of things of interest. And I disperse that so that you guys can look at how we do business. Frankly, the conference really focused on a couple of issues that have not had to be a lot here yet. Senate Bill Five involving municipal courts and how they handle their failure to appear fines and how they generate their revenue from traffic violations was a big focus of the legislature and has resulted in a piece of legislation that, starting next year, will require all cities to file an annual financial report to show that they are not generating more than thirty percent of their total revenues from minor traffic violations. And I'm certain our prosecutor and municipal judge and others will be going to school to learn how do we bring us into compliance with that, and our staff will respond appropriately. We're fortunate right now, at least so far in Cass County, that we've not been named a party to the wave that's gone in St. Louis and in Jackson County of naming cities and suits for failure to appear fines and fees, which I think is improperly and poorly made, but the gist of it is coming out of the Ferguson that people were using those fines and fees to generate revenue from those least able to pay it. There also was a thing on how, as a city attorney, you should conduct yourself at city council meetings. And I knew you'd want me to pay rapt attention to that, because I have been misbehaving in these for a number of years. And I think you will be surprised to learn that there was, the presenter said that the city attorney should not answer legal questions from the council during council meetings. And unfortunately, having been around a long time, some people know me and said, that's not how Willarth does it. And right down at it, so I was called in and asked to respond to that, what my position was and whether I would take this good advice and quit answering questions during council meetings. And I said that I thought answering as best I could the questions during council meetings was what I did to try to make sure I was around to be at the next council meeting. But there is a divergence of thought on that, and several cities say, no, I'll take that under advisement and get back to you. So when I do that, you'll either know that the question's really out of line and we're dangerous, or I'm as dumb as advertised. So I was interested. Thank you very much for the privilege of attending and representing you. Again, it is a very useful and interesting conference to meet with the people from around the state, and I thank you for the opportunity. Questions, I'm sorry.
My question is more to the city manager. I think that it was at thirty percent, and I believe you told me that Raymore only uses four percent, so we're well under the guidelines on that.
Way to go, Big Jim.
Mr. Willarth often refers to me as Big Jim, so that's correct. When we take the entirety of our municipal court fines, which include those that are definitely questionable concerning, you know, traffic fines, if we were to limit it to just the traffic fines that come into play here, we are well below the thirty percent threshold. We have nothing to worry about at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask for some clarification, more for my own benefit, but I've been going off this for almost six years now. But it was my understanding, maybe wrongfully so, but I'm going to ask Joe to either not answer it or to answer it. It was my understanding previously until tonight that that thirty percent threshold was in relation to traffic fines given out along state highways. And the justification that was told to me at the time when I was told about this was that, gosh, I can't remember verbatim what they said, but it was only along the state highways. And it was to prevent the speed trap situation that, without going into names of municipalities, that there's a perception that there's a speed trap in many of these small towns and that most of their revenues come from that source. And that that legislation was written for state highways and that only. Am I correct, incorrect, or can you explain that a little bit more, so I'm not so incorrect in the future?
I'm going to let Mr. Fairborn supplement my answer. But my understanding was that perhaps the original intent of the legislation was to deal only with the situation that you're talking about. But as it's come down, I read it to be all the traffic court violations and fines versus our total revenue, sir.
And that interpretation has yet to be made in its final form. You may remember, we had this dance a few months ago on something else as well. State highways versus within the definition highways of the state. And highways of the state takes on a much broader application when you're using that particular definition. And that's what they're targeting now.
Okay, with that in mind, and I'm sorry to everybody for belaboring this, but I'm real curious. To dovetail off of what Mrs. Hubach was asking about, with all of those fines, all the traffic fines and that, we're still at less than four percent or thereabout?
I'm not sure on the four percent number. I don't want to be quoting that number, but we have done this calculation several times. We are well below the thirty percent threshold.
Well, what my concern is, is, you know, I'm going to editorialize here, because I, we hire police officers to do a job that we expect them to do, and that's enforce our laws when that needs to be done. And I just have a real problem with, lack for better term, PC crowds saying that you can only write so much, you know? That what do we do? You know, here's a rhetorical question. What do we do? We get to the twenty-nine percent and then tell our police department, hey, take some time off because you guys are being too efficient, you know? I don't ask, I don't expect anybody to answer that, but I got a philosophical problem with, you know, putting a number on where our police are able to enforce the law and protect our cities.
Councilmember Kellogg, I would say to you that the Missouri Municipal League and many entities tried to speak against this bill and bring up factors like that, as it's been approved. It's my understanding, still, it was steamrolled through the process at rapid speed and didn't even go through some of the rural committee hearings. It was desolate to be approved because of the uproar that exists over St. Louis area about this situation. Probably good reason and questions that you're asking, probably.
Mr. Willarth, I, why, in my head, I'm thinking that, I thought it was going from thirty to twenty percent, and St. Louis was doing twelve and a half or twelve, something in those certain counties.
Yeah, let me get back to those modifications. I'm reading the bill I presented says thirty, and I believe it's been modified.
Okay. Because I thought that I read last week that it was twenty percent, and it used to be thirty.
I can tell you that the, and I think it also must make it special legislation, that they've kicked into this bill that if you exceed this in the St. Louis area, that they will then hold, require an election to disincorporate your city.
Right.
And if approved by the voters in sixty percent, you will no longer be a city in hopes, I think, editorially prompting here, to reduce the large number of cities in St. Louis County, some of whom generate their revenue through their municipal, a lot of their revenue through their municipal courts. And that, I think, is the abuse someone was trying to cure that's come with this wide swath that even affect us. But there are some special provisions about St. Louis in the bill, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Morehead?
I have, from personal experience, have represented a police department here in the state of Missouri on this issue. It's not just the issue of giving tickets on highways. It's also instances where a driver would receive as many as six to eight tickets per stop. So it's the volume of tickets as well. Previous court cases, and Mr. Willarth's the attorney in the room, but my reading of previous court cases on this issue, when they have hit their threshold, the courts have mandated that the municipalities take the monies over and above that threshold, and that is cheats to the schools.
To the street.
So the money, it's not, they're not ordered to stop mid-month, just if they're found to go over. That money goes to the betterment of the community. So they're not encouraged, they're not told to stop, so.
And to give you the numbers associated with this, our total court revenues projected for the current fiscal year are four hundred and forty thousand dollars, seven, four hundred and forty thousand, seventy-eight dollars of total revenues of eight million, nine hundred and seventeen, one sixty-nine. So approximately point zero, 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 five of our revenues. So we may be discussing this in a few years, but it's not going to be, I don't think, anytime soon.
This is a good example of why Mr. Fairborn doesn't want me to report often, because I stir up trouble and get the meeting off focus, and I apologize for that.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Willarth. Just a couple of items to add to the staff reports. Next week's work session, July twentieth, there will be two items on the agenda that have kind of been long awaited. The median beautification program that we're wanting to bring to the council, Mike and his staff have been working very, very hard on those no-man medians that we see throughout the city and who's responsible for those in those areas. And also, we will, the council, you may remember, about a month and a half ago, we had a meeting on the reserve fund, million and a half, and proposed an activity center to you. It went through some iterations. The city council asked us to come back with three different areas of cost detail, and we have prepared those, and we'll be coming back to the city council and asking for direction on how to proceed. Those two items on next week's agenda. Last but not least, we would like to introduce our new communications manager to you all this evening. His name is Mr. Mike Eke. He is sitting in the back of the room with his, oh, and I was going to say with his wife, Sarah, and daughter, but people get so impatient. I don't understand why at that age, which is crazy. Plus, she kyped my crayons and probably walked out of here with him. The, Mike is a very, very welcome addition. As you've seen from some of his pictures, we immediately put him very, very high in the air in a bucket truck, and he came through with flying colors for us. A lot of great experience. He's already begun to contribute to several of our meetings with some really good input. Unfortunately, between he and the mayor, I'm starting to feel smaller and smaller on the administrative side, because they're both so tall, and I'm just getting littler. So despite that, he's with us this evening, so we welcome him. That concludes staff reports, sir.
All right. I'll entertain our motion to dispose of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda to include items, A, city council minutes for the June twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, meeting, and the appointment of William Russ to the Raymore Tree Board.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Consent agenda is approved. Move on to unfinished business. We have the second reading of Bill Thirty-eight-one by title only.
The second reading of Bill Thirty-eight-one by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending the park fund of the fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget.
I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill Thirty-eight-one for a budget amendment for the park fund vehicle additions.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill Thirty-eight-one. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business, beginning with a public hearing on Bill Thirty-eight-three. We have a reading of Bill Thirty-eight-three by title only.
The first reading of Bill Thirty-eight-three by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, granting to Le Cleed Gas Company, a Missouri corporation doing business as Missouri Gas Energy, operating a gas distribution system in the city of Raymore, Missouri, its successors or assigns, a franchise to operate a natural gas distribution plan and system in said city and relating thereto.
We'll open up the public hearing by asking for a staff report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would call on Ms. Hout.
Good evening. This ordinance would approve a twenty-year, non-exclusive franchise agreement with Le Cleed, or Missouri Gas Energy, as they're known in our city. As you know, the franchise agreement is an agreement between a city and a utility that provides certain requirements that must be met in order for the utility to use the city's public right-of-way. In exchange, the utility pays a franchise fee to the city for the ability to use the right-of-way. Section twelve point one of our city charter outlines four requirements that must be met to approve a franchise agreement. There are certain timeline and advertising requirements in addition to the fact that the franchise agreement cannot be exclusive, and it cannot be for a term of more than twenty years. Mike Crass and I worked along with Joe Willarth to make sure the terms of the agreement were satisfactory to us at the staff level. We've also satisfied the terms of section twelve point one, and based on that, staff recommends approval.
Questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I was reading through this, this speaks of just public-city property right-of-way. Am I correct? Is this, could this in any way be, affect private property owners, homeowners? And if it does, what are the resources?
It's my understanding it's just right-of-way, but I'll defer to Joe.
I will allow Mike, Mr. Crass, to amend this answer, but there are dedicated utility easements throughout the city that supply the gas to the individual homeowners. And so in those easements, there may be gas lines throughout the city, not just on ours.
Mr. Fairborn, for clarification, the way I read this was, there was a purchase of these easements prior to this. The ten-year, the previous ten-year agreement expired. So this is basically a continuation, although we're going to a twenty-year instead of a ten-year. So there's no change of the existing easement?
That is correct. There is no change in the size of that easement. The, the, it, the average home, the easement that runs through the front yards of the homes is startlingly large. Easements, I've been briefed up by Mr. Crass on this almost too extensively over the course of the last couple of weeks. Easements stack, although they can use all one easement. In other words, if the telephone company is coming through your front yard, although normally they're in the back, but the easements within the front yard stack. So you have a gas easement, which is necessarily very, very large. From a public safety standpoint, theirs tends to take up quite a bit of room. And then the telephone stacks on top of that, and electrical stacks on top of that, cable stacks on top of that. They don't always use all that space. But if you look at the easement that's granted within your front yard, when it's added to our easement within the street and our sewer easement, sometimes those easements do tend to run up in those front yards a long way, even though they're not necessarily used all the way up there. Sometimes they are. You can see some boxes that run pretty high up there, but that, again, the two largest are ours, which is within the street, the right-of-way easement. And then, once they start at the curb with their own and start running those back, it can be a little bit of a shock to the average homeowner just how much room somebody could actually get on their front yard and dig on, even though they normally don't.
And Mr. Morehead's question was very similar to mine. I was curious as to what we had done previously, and the ten-year agreement was what we had previous to this, is that's correct?
That is correct. And of course, the seven percent remains the same as far as the franchise agreement with the city is concerned. If the council is interested, this year, we estimate that that seven percent will garner approximately four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and change.
It's hard to ask a question when you answer it before I, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And of that four hundred and some odd thousand dollars, what's that money used for, I guess? What, do we earmark that for something? And I'll give full disclosure here. The reason why I'm so interested in this is because I have been on the phone with Mr. Fairborn for about the last two weeks over this, so I've gotten an education on this, too. And he is very correct that those easements can really get sizable. If you want to look at mine, I'll show you. It's very sizable, to the point where I've only got seven feet off the front of my house before I'm standing into an easement. And the reason for my question is this. What's that money used for? Because it's my understanding, again, please correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, that any repairs that are done inside of an easement is at the homeowner's expense as far as repairing. Like, and I know that they can come in and they can dig up the yard and all of that and put their silos in my front yard and all of that. I get real passionate here. But the landscape that us as homeowners put into our yards is quite substantial. And it can be very expensive. But I do know that we are, as property owners, able to use our land as we wish to the extent of the code. But if we build or do something, plant inside of an easement, we do that at our own risk. And the reason why I'm so passionate about this is because that easement in my front yard is twenty-five foot from what I see in my plot, from my property line back to my house, which only leaves me seven feet in front of my house that is actually up to me, you know? What I say nobody else has a right to. So I'm just curious what that four hundred thousand dollars is used for when we get those monies in from the utilities. that $400,000 is, is used for when we get those monies in from the utilities.
It, it is straight into the general fund. It supplements the operations of the general fund and contributes to general fund balance. As far as, and I would stand corrected by Mr. Crass, the, the requirement on their part, if they come in, is to reestablish the turf that is in your front yard. If you have a flower garden there, you're probably going to be on your own. Mike, is that fairly accurate? But they have to reestablish the turf in your front yard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions. First of all, this agreement we've had for at least 10 years. Have we had it for longer? And are there any other changes besides changing from 10 years to 20 years? Next question, what happens if we don't approve this agreement?
Here you go, Joe.
On the 15th of July, the consequences don't seem severe. On the 5th of December, I think we'll have a large crowd here if we don't have a natural gas supply. The initial franchise passed in 1994 was for a 20-year term. In 10-year, to the gas service company, it was transferred to MGE in 2005, and that's when they got the 10-year renewal, and then in fact was sold in 2013 to Le Cleed Gas Company. So, it is a 20-year deal. This is one of those questions you're not supposed to answer in public. We do not have an alternative source. The negotiations over this agreement went on for three months. One reason they did is because I tried to expand or keep right-of-way and insurance rights with the help of Mr. Crass and others. And what I learned, they wouldn't give in whenever I went to the law. The utility companies in this state have such power, they go to the legislature and get the right-of-way changed to be a more favorable interpretation for them than what Mr. Crass and I would like. So, for example, if it's a street or public project, then they have to move the gas line. But if it's for our water company or what our proprietary uses, and we tell them to move their line, we've got to help pay in that. And the, and we got the compromised language in the first paragraph. It was a hard fight to get them to recognize our code on right-of-way, because they used on "we", we might change it and make it more restrictive than what the state law is, and they're only going to do what the state law is. And so, the compromised language you have there at the end of the first paragraph says, "Subject to proper law, regulation by the city and all lawful ordinances of the city now in existence are here enacted, which are not inconsistent with the state law that they go down and get changed down." So, short answer to your, long answer to your question was, yes, it is a 20-year term, and no, I don't know of an alternative, and therefore, this is what the best I, this is the best I can do for you in these negotiations.
Okay, go ahead. Mr. Fairborn?
I got, I guess, more of a comment than a question. In this, it's written that the 7% gross receipt is paid by the Missouri Gas Energy. We actually pay for that. When you look at the gas bill, when we get our bill, they charge the citizens of Raymore the 7%. Is that correct?
That's correct. They all do, sir.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify that.
Getting, getting to the heart of the, the bill itself, though, here, the staff memorandum identified no economic or financial impact as a result of us approving this. So, I mean, as far as to the city, and no material changes based on the previous arrangement, correct?
That is accurate, sir.
Any other questions, statements? Thank you. The floor is open for public comment. Please identify yourself for the record and keep your comments under five minutes. Seeing anyone come forward, I'll close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3083.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3083 to approve the application for the Le Cleed MGE franchise agreement.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 3083. Is there any discussion? Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be supporting this tonight with me holding my nose, because I, I have a real issue with this. But, I, I, I belabored it long enough, but I, I, like I say, I, I'm not just going to raise my hand here and just not say anything. It's one of those things I feel like I'm almost forced to do it for the better of the community, and I, I realize it is for the better of the community, but I, I don't feel like the property owner's rights are taken into consideration very well here. And, you know, it's legislation. I'm forced to do what I have to do, but I'm not going to shut up and just raise my hand.
Just real quick. The people in Raymore have to have gas to heat their homes, warm their water, that sort of thing. This is an agreement that's worked for us for at least 20 years now, and we're basically just extending it. We're not taking any more land from anybody or anything like that. Not, you know, I, this seems like a no-brainer to me.
All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Hey, we have the first reading of Bill 3084 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3084 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri amending the zoning map from Cass County Rural Residential District to RR Rural Residential District, Lot 12 in Willow Hills subdivision, Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
If this requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing by asking for a staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. Bill 3084 is a request for council to establish the rural residential zoning designation for property located at 1007 North Jackson Street. This is Lot 12 of the Willow Hills subdivision. In accordance with the Missouri State statute, when a property is annexed into a city, that property shall retain its county zoning designation until that property goes through the city rezoning public hearing process. As part of the annexation of this property, there was an annexation agreement, and at that, at that time, the property owner consented to the city being the applicant to establish the city zoning classification on the property. That is customarily what is done on voluntary annexations, is that the city handles the rezoning application process. And the property owner did consent to the property being rezoned to the RR designation. I will note that there's a total of 30 properties in the subdivision. 28 of the properties are currently zoned RR. This would be the 29th, and there still remains one lot that is in the unincorporated area of Cass County. Since it is being handled as a rezoning, it does require a public hearing, so we did advertise for hearing this evening. I do need to enter into the record the notices that were sent to adjoining property owners. Notice of publication in the journal, our Unified Development Code, the application, our growth management plan, and the staff report submitted to you this evening. The planning commission has submitted proposed filings of fact regarding this, this request. It was at their July 7th meeting that they voted 8-0 to accept those filings and forward this case to the city council with the recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Open the floor for public comment. Please identify yourself for the record and keep your comments under five minutes. We'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3084.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3084 for the rezoning of Willow Hills, Lot 12.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill 3084. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Next is a liquor license renewal of... Open the floor for public comment. Please keep your comments under five minutes. We have a staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I would ask that the city clerk make staff report.
Thank you. Jeanette Singleton, on behalf of the Pitt Grill and Bar located at 1242/46 West Foxwood Drive, has filed an application for a 2015, 2016 renewal of their liquor license. The applicant has met the requirements of city code. Staff recommends approval. The applicant is in the audience to answer any questions that council may have.
If there's any public wishes to come forward, please come forward now. Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the cited.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the liquor license renewal for the Pitt Grill and Bar.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the license renewal. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Approved unanimously. We have the first reading of Bill 3082 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3082 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, adding Article II, Sections 120.100 through 120.150 to the Raymore City Code, establishing the City Arts Commission.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll call Ms. Hout.
Good evening. When the mayor and city council, when you appointed the arts commissioners, one of their first orders of business was to establish themselves within the city code. They've spent the last couple of months working on creating a draft code section, and that's before you this evening. The arts commissioners did approve unanimously to recommend to the city council that you all approve the section of code on their behalf.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3082.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3082, establishing the City Arts Commission in the city code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill 3082. Is there any discussion?
I just want to take a minute to say that I'm really excited about this. Having spoken to, to a few people on the arts commission, getting to meet with them when we did have the meeting with them, it's exciting to see the work that they've done so far. I'm excited to see what, what happens with this commission and welcome them again as part of our city officially.
There's a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question. I wondered if the word "public" should be in there with art, because I noticed in looking with Blue Springs, they mentioned it as being public art. And so, do we need to make that same distinction, or is it okay like it is?
Some, some of the concern that I might have with that, as far as suggesting to the council, the arts commission's, commission is so broad that some of the things that they bring to the city could be a private gallery here for exhibition in city hall. There could be portions of the Philharmonic come down and play, which might not necessarily be, fall into that auspice of public art, rather than instead, it would be them working with the, with the city council to bring private art into the city for the enjoyment of our citizens. So, I would probably recommend to the council that you keep it in its broadest context, if possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I dovetail off what Mrs. Ab- I'm sorry, ab-tail-gone. I
should just call you Sonia instead. I'm excited about this also, sharing your excitement. I'd like to say thank you to all of the arts commission and Meredith also for guiding them through and, and working as liaison for all their hard work up to this point. It, like I say, we, we agreed to do this some time ago and got them in place, and it's, it's really nice to see this go forward. Congratulate them on their work and thank them for it, and I'll be supporting it.
There is a motion and a second to approve Bill 3082. All in favor? We'll pass unanimously. Hey, we have the reading of Resolution 1535 by title only, please.
The reading of Resolution 15-35 by title only, a resolution of the city of Raymore, Missouri amending the 2014 sidewalk project.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn and Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The 2014 sidewalk project, as, as approved by council, called for the construction of a sidewalk along the east side of Aspen Street from Elm Street to Lucy Webb Road. As we got into the design of the project, we encountered a couple of conflicts. One, there was no, there's no right-of-way along the, or there's no additional right-of-way along the east side of Aspen Street. The edge of the pavement is actually the right-of-way line. So, we started negotiating with the, the cemetery board to see if there was a way to fit the sidewalk on the cemetery property. We had worked out a handshake agreement whereby we attempted to design a sidewalk that stayed about three feet away from the plot corners that, that they had. There's a number of existing plot corners that are very close to Aspen. We, we had those surveyed, we laid out the sidewalk, and it, there are just too many areas where we can't match and meet that requirement, and also, there is some drainage concerns with the ditch along the east side of, of Aspen. So, we took another look at the program, and there is a need for a sidewalk along Aspen, and what provides actually connectivity to the neighborhood and the areas to the south is if, if we construct a segment along the west side from Elm to Franklin. Going further south on Aspen is just not possible. We have conflicts with trees, fences, ditches, the ditch, and other things. So, we, we have similar conflicts further south of Franklin that we, that we have on the east side. You know, our normal process has been to hold a public hearing and have council receive comments. We did go out, my staff did go out and meet with the residents, the resident of the property that, or the owners of the property, and they are agreeable to the sidewalk being located on the west side along their frontage, and so, we recommend adoption of Resolution 1535, amending the 2014 sidewalk program.
Questions of staff? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of 1535.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 15-35, amending the 2014 sidewalk project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1535. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the reading of Bill 3086 by title only, please.
The reading of Bill 3086 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Orr Wyatt Streetscapes for the Johnston Drive reconstruction project, city project number 15-215-202, in the amount of $321,864.50, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Crass to make staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn and Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This project involves the reconstruction of Johnson Drive from approximately Silvertop Lane, or Silver Lake Circle to Silvertop Lane. We advertised bid, for bids, in accordance with our, our policies. We held two pre-construction, or pre-bid meetings. We did have a good response to the pre-bid, at the pre-bid meetings for contractors showing interest in the project. Unfortunately, we only see, received one, one bid. Within our memo, we outlined the process by which we evaluate whether or not to award to the, to a single bidder, Orr Wyatt Streetscapes meets all of those requirements. In addition, we did reach out to some of the other bidders and asked why they didn't choose to submit on the project. Was there something technically wrong, something wrong with the specs? What we got from several of them is, the rains we have had have created a significant backlog in work, and they just didn't feel their current workloads would allow them to take on this project. This project is pretty extensive. It, it involves removing the pavement, removing the subgrade, putting down a, a geotextile, rebuilding the entire road. And so, Orr Wyatt Streetscapes has done the, they've done the, recently done the farmer's market site work improvements. They did another small project on, on the Walmart median. We are, do recommend award of the contract to them. One of the other things we look at is, how does their bid compare to our engineer's estimate? Our engineer's estimate for the project, based on the final scope of work, was $389,000. Orr Wyatt's bid was $321,864.
Questions of staff?
Assuming approval of this, what would be the timeframe for, estimated timeframe for completion?
Late September, early October. We've got to get the water main project done and out of the way.
Thank you.
We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3086 for the reconstruction of Johnston Drive.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill 3086. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the first reading of Bill 3088 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3088 by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2015 capital budget.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Crass to make the report.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For quite some time, staff has been working on a project to create an alternate access to the Ryans Steakhouse property. We, earlier this year, when Block and Company came forward for a preliminary plot extension, it was conditioned upon them signing the necessary easements for this work to go, move forward. We have obtained those easements. We have also obtained the necessary easements from the Ryans ownership. We have completed the plans and specifications. So at this time, we are seeking funding for the project. It was not included in the fiscal year 2015 capital program, and we are requesting that the capital budget be amended in the amount of sixty thousand dollars to provide funding for this project.
Questions, the staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Crass, would that amount include, obviously, the construction of the new entrance off of the new Kentucky Road portion? Does that also include the closing of the portion on fifty-eight?
This project does not include that. We are looking at that and trying to analyze some data, because anecdotally, it does not appear that that driveway gets a lot of use. We're trying to do some traffic counts there. Some of it get, some of the traffic counts, when we did it with our automated counters, get colored a little bit because of folks turning left out of Lowe's, swinging wide. So we've done some hand counts up there, and we want to take an opportunity to do a few more, but, and then open up conversations with Ryans, and I'm going to yield to Mr. Fairborn.
Great peripheral vision, Mike. We're calling this the one-two punch project, sir. We want them to see the value of what we're putting in, that that does in fact meet their needs and exceeds what they think it's going to do. There is no reason to have drivers on fifty-eight and drivers trying to come out of that front entrance live in fear every day. So now they can use this entrance and get to a light that will further drop the use of the front entrance, and then we will hit them with recommendations from both the city and MoDOT at the same time. Thank you.
Just a question, because I'm curious. Is this project more expensive now that we've had to wait so long to do it? I don't remember what the cost was going to be initially.
I think several years ago, we had estimated about fifty thousand. We took another look at it, added a little bit in for contingencies, and that's how we arrived at the new price.
It was in at forty-eight seven without contingencies.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty eighty-eight for the Ryans Access Modification Budget Amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill thirty eighty-eight. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Yep.
One thing that you, one thing that you probably already know, during normal traffic flow, we'll have a few people that will cut through there simply because of the backup of traffic from the light at Dean Avenue. If we have a collision, if we have our police department or Belton Police Department out there working an accident, then we have exclusive flow through their parking lot because people are going, they don't want to wait in line. That's what concerns me, because then people are basically using that as normal traffic highway flow with consumers and businesses within the parking lot and pedestrians as well. So I hope that they do see the value of, we opened the new entrance there off of the new Kentucky Road, and the safety factor that would come from closing that. It's a much better solution. Thank you.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the first reading of Bill thirty eighty-seven by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill thirty eighty-seven by title only, in ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an accreditation agreement with the Accreditation Council of the American Public Works Association in the amount of seven thousand seven hundred dollars.
Staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'd ask Mr. Crass to make the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am very pleased to bring this forward to you. It is a milestone in our accreditation process that we embarked on about a year ago. Accreditation is a mark of professionalism that indicates a public works agency has made commitment to continuous improvement in the delivery of public works operations and services in the community it serves. That's a little short. This accreditation process actually covers all of the city operations. There are elements of it that deal with administration, human resources, emergency management, all of the departments which have contributed very, very much over the last year. Where we are right now is in the self, as outlined in my memo, we are in the self-assessment phase and the improvement phase. We have identified four hundred and thirteen practices that need to have written policies established for them. We have completed two hundred and thirty-four of them. Sixty-nine are within partial compliance, and a hundred and ten are yet to be initiated. What the agreement does before you is lock in the terms and conditions of our accreditation. There is a Practices Manual that is published by the American Public Works Association. This locks us into the best practices outlined in the eighth edition. We missed out on the seventh edition, which had a few less onerous requirements in it, and I'd like to make sure that there isn't a ninth edition slipped in. So I am really pleased with the hard work with my fellow department heads, with my operations and maintenance staff, my engineering assistant director to get us to this point. I am fully confident that we will complete the process well within the timelines that are outlined.
So, Mr. Crass, basically, you're trying to make sure the target quits moving while you're trying to hit it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good luck with that.
Working in education and early childhood specifically, I understand what accreditation means and what an honor that is to get and all of that. But just help me be able to articulate to other people why we're spending seven thousand dollars on this.
The seven thousand dollars is for the review of our practices to obtain the accreditation. I think what the accreditation does is it recognizes that our policy procedures and practices have been evaluated against national standards, that we are good stewards of our taxpayer dollars. As Mr. Kellogg mentioned earlier, we are committed to continuous improvement. Once we go down this road, every three years, we go through the process again to assure that our policies are updated, that we are continuing to evaluate our practices and make sure that they are up to date with the current state of the practice and utilizing our taxpayer dollars to the best of our abilities.
And if I could dovetail off of that, just a real practical, boots-on-the-ground example. We have had a number of these where we went, hmm, we need to change that. Doesn't mean we're doing it bad. We need to change it so that we're doing it better. Bidding processes, the way we submit our bids to the plan houses, the requirements that we have in our RFPs, the specifications that we use when we're putting out those RFPs, number of those have been reviewed, tweaked, some of them outright changed for a better practice, more fair practice, more transparent practice in doing an RFP. Just one really small example where we're able to improve, to get the accreditation. Again, as Mr. Crass indicated, the seven thousand dollars is to have them come in here and say, you're doing it the right way. The value of it is what we are doing right now, making the changes, doing the review that's necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And appreciate that clarification. That helps a lot for me. Well, my question is, is, and I heard a term of three years. This is something that we're just going to have as an expenditure this year, and then when we go through this, do we need to pay this again for the next review, whether that's three years, five years? And the second question to that is how often do we go back and ask them to come back in, re-review us again? Because best practices change with technology, and they change with time, they change with regulations and such. So I can easily see this coming back in the future. It's just, is there a certain litmus test that they have that we have to do this every so often?
It's on a three-year cycle. And as far as the, as far as the cost of that, it is less than the seven thousand, but I don't, I was just happy to get through the initial process. And because it will, it will turn out being about a two-year process to get through everything. And I can certainly, I think we can take a stab at what that is, but it really comes down to how many practices they come and look at and review when they come back for re-accreditation.
We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty eighty-seven for the approval of the APWA accreditation agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just real quick, kudos to city staff. Like I said, I, as a teacher in education, especially in early childhood, accreditation is a huge task for us. I can't imagine, looking at the checklist of items you had in the staff memo, it looks like tons and tons of work. And so, kudos to city staff, Mike, your staff, for taking this on to begin with for all the work you've already done and what you're committing to doing.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That takes care of new business. If anybody from the public would like to comment, please state your name and record. Keep your comments within five minutes. Senior one, close the public comment and move on to mayor council communication, getting this evening with Mr. Moorhead.
Two quick things. First of all, I want to commend the Parks and Recs Department for a wonderful Fourth of July. I had an opportunity to go out there for the fireworks and some of the activities, and as I was pulling in, I realized that they didn't have the day off, and many were working, and the event went very well. So I want to commend the department for that. And then the second, I normally don't do this, but I'm going to get real political here for a moment. You know, I've spent twenty-six years in the law, and I've even represented a police department accused of the issues regarding, you know, writing too many tickets and the amount of money that's generated from that. And I just want to express that I have absolutely no concern with that here for the city of Raymore because of the following fact. First of all, the biggest misconception of this is that it is internal with the police department. And actually, it is quite common that the police department actually has very little input about this. I have had instances where you can always get a stray officer that gets a little aggressive writing some tickets, but the reality is, is when you have a municipality that generates money from ticket writing, it typically is pervasive from the top down. And I mean, so I seriously doubt the nine of us on this dais have a desire to press staff for that. The staff in front of us don't seem to have that same attitude, and I definitely don't see it from our police department. So I'm not concerned about this in the least. But again, the departments and the cities that have this issue, it is a problem that starts at the central core, the city management, and that is not present here. So to me, it's not even worthy of a discussion. It's not a problem. We're not going to have a problem with it. We're not even close. And I wish to, I just, I get a little protective of the fact that it's not a law enforcement issue, even though they may be the ones writing the tickets. So I hope the public will keep that in mind. So, thank you.
Thank you. I want to talk about park maintenance. Chapter ninety of the state statute says that cities can charge up to two mil on property taxes for park maintenance. We charge just one point two fifty-one hundredths of a mil, which gives us a projected income of three hundred and forty thousand for the coming budget. With seven hundred, seven hundred and twenty-two households, that averages around forty-four dollars each year in taxes per household. Another way of looking at it is that it is at nine point fifty-seven cents of every dollar in your taxes goes to the park fund. This is not enough to cover the existing maintenance costs of our memorial and recreational park, our trail system, and the several small neighborhood parks. Also, it isn't going to be enough to cover future farmers market and Hawk Ridge maintenance costs. The council currently transfers a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars from the other funds to the park fund to help cover for maintenance shortfall. The park storm water sales tax is supposed to be available for park improvements. We can't maintain, let alone improve Hawk Ridge on the current park board property tax and half of the five cent sales tax. I am requesting that the council consider authorization of the full two mil levy be placed on the ballot at the April election to help in the maintenance of our park and trail system. This money, then, would be designated for the parks and could not be used for anything else.
Councilmember Abdel Kwan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take a minute to welcome our new communications director, the arts commission as well, and kudos to, I'll just echo, kudos to park staff and also police department and other city staff that work hard for the Fourth of July celebration. I think despite all of the hoopla about the big shell in Longview, we had an awesome show here. And I know, I headed over to the park for a little while, saw the car show and talked to some people, but didn't stay over there for the fireworks show because I have a perfect view from my driveway. So, but we invited people over there, and everyone who, I heard talk about it, yet again, just went on and on about what a great show it was and how awesome the Raymore fireworks and Fourth of July celebration always is. So, good job.
Councilmember Holman.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Mr. Eke. Glad to have you on board. Looking forward to good things in the future. I know everybody's excited to have you here. I've got a jam on the parks thing, too. Great job with the Fourth of July. I thought the display was fantastic. Always watch it from my house, and I'm quite a ways away, and I can see it. It looks really nice and able to tell everybody, that's the city's display over there. Look at it, and you look at the one to the north, from my house, eh? You know, ours looks as good or better than theirs. So, great job. I spent a night with the police department when they did a DWI checkpoint recently out here on Fifty-Eight Highway. Quite an impressive operation. If you ever get a chance to go out, you have to stay up a little late, but we have officers from multiple jurisdictions because of the agreement or the organization that they're involved with. And they really have that down to more of a science than when I did it several years ago. Very impressed. The chief was out there with me, and we spent most of the night talking while they were doing all the work, which was really interesting. I want to express my admiration and appreciation for, we've talked about public works and your pursuit, Mike, and your group's pursuit of the APWA accreditation process. I want to thank you personally, Mr. Fairborn and the management team, because that's leadership vision. That's something that you had to decide on as a priority, and I really commend that, because you could have gone any number of ways. It would be surprising, I think, to a number of people if you went out and looked at the various public works department across the state or across the nation, and how many fairly sizable ones just, we do things that way because we've always done it that way. We're asking an outside group to come in and look at our processes from a best practice standpoint and saying, you might want to consider it doing this way because this is a standard across the board, whether that be, you know, New York City, or whether that's Kansas City, or whether that's Raymore. So impressive vision on your part, sir. I can't say enough about that. Great job, and good, kudos to the management team overall for making that a team project. The last thing I want to mention is I hope everybody got to see the picture of it staring us in the face, the big flag back there that was on the Conning Tower. And the name of the ship escapes me. Jim, you'll have to help me. The sub?
Nuclear attack sub USS Missouri, sir.
USS Missouri. I should have known that one. Gosh. The way that was done, getting a flag of that size was genius, because the other one, I don't know what other city it was, but it was really tiny. So ours really stood out. That ought to give you kind of an idea of how big the Conning Tower is on a nuclear submarine. And I really think we ought to take that picture and blow it up into a billboard about that size and put it out here at our Community Days Festival, because that is an impressive photo. And just, it just really says a lot about the city. That was really neat. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
No comments tonight.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To dovetail off what Mr. Holman just says, you know, To dovetail off of what Mr. Kellogg just says, you know, one thing that I think of the APWA and how well I think it's a good thing to undertake is, it takes courage of staff to have somebody come in and say, you know, look at our practices. We're not going to say that we've got the best, we just want an outsider to come in. It takes a lot of courage to allow somebody to do that. So I say thank you for that. Thank you to everybody who's worked on that, not just administration staff and directors and that, but everybody. Because 142 written policies so far, and we've got, that's just a fraction. You know, I can sit here and think of how much work and how much effort and resources have to go into that, and how much heart and dedication each person has to do. So, you know, thank everybody who's working on that, which I have to assume that it's pretty much the whole staff, from that office down there to that office down there, you know. So, you know, thank you. You're doing it for us, for our city, and I'm very commendables.
Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's a lot of people we could recognize tonight. You know, I'm the new guy, and every week, I'm more and more impressed. I got to talk with Jim this week, and he helped me through some questions and took my calls. And as I said, every week, I get more and more impressed. We, an organization I'm a part of, we got to hear Ryan Murdock from the Emergency Management Coordinator speak. Little did I know, the next night, we were going to have the first bout of severe weather. I don't blame him. And I got to sign up for the city notification website, which I want to tell everybody they should do that. And then we had the second night of bad weather. Of course, we missed the Monday work session meeting. My 10-year-old was very disappointed that she didn't get to see a tornado. I was not. But I just want to just tell staff that, you know, I could go down the line, but I really appreciate their hard work, and I'm very impressed. Thank you.
Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a couple of weeks since we've met here, and quite a bit of things have happened. We had the wonderful fireworks display, and I really thought, as I drove in, I thought, wow, how did I get so close this year? It seemed like a lot of people were holding parties all around the perimeter of the park in their homes, and that probably helped us out in the parking on our grounds. But really enjoyed that. And another thing I had an opportunity to do, I don't know that I enjoyed it or not, but I spent 10 hours working security, sitting in a parking lot at Office Max across from Walmart, watching a fireworks tent from 10 o'clock at night till 8:00 a.m. in the morning the next day. And it was, I did keep track of how many times a sub police cars and what time, and how long it had been since I'd seen another one, and wondered why I hadn't been bothered. You know, here's some weird guy watching a movie in his van all night long by a fireworks stand. But it's very interesting to see what happens at different times of the evening, what time people get to Lowe's, what time people come to Sam's Club at maybe 4:00 a.m., and some of the interesting events that happen across the street and Walmart parking lot. And sometimes there were people visiting with them from our police department, just making sure that they were where they were supposed to be and doing what they were supposed to do. So that was, it was very interesting. But I will say that the overall feeling was, I'm sitting in a parking lot in the middle of the city in the dark all night by myself, and I felt pretty safe. I mean, for the most part, you know, every once in a while, I'm like, oh, I gotta pause my show and look around, I heard a noise. But, you know, for the most part, it's a really very safe city, but strange that I didn't have somebody come up and say, hey, why, what are you doing here? But I hopefully won't have to do that again soon. Did it for my children and for fundraising. And also, I wanted to say that I'm excited about the work that's going to be done in Ward II in the next four months on water and roadways. There's going to be a lot of great things that'll help a lot of people. And just remember, while the construction's going on, we'll figure out a way to get out of our driveways and find a way to one of our main connectors. Thank you.
And I'll just say, all the good stuff's already been taken. So I'll just close the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? We're in adjournment.